All right, let's do get started because people are waiting. We have a shorter presentation today just to hit highlights of what is going on here. We'll start off, let's just go ahead and start with what this project is. Several of you asked questions immediately about what the project is or why are we doing this? We'll try to give you a little background, talk about the development code, and then Module 2. We draft this work in three parts. We have delivered one in the fall. There's another one been published or posted now, and there'll be another one in a couple of months. We'll tell you why and what those are, and we'll do questions, and we'll have as many questions as you want to ask. I do want to clarify that our firm has been hired to do two different things. One is to update the general plan, and the second is to revise the development code. The difference is that in plans are generally visionary and advisory. In Arizona, you have a state law which says your zoning must be consistent with your plan. You can't have a plan that says go left and zoning that says go right, but there's a lot of flexibility as to how you want to do it. And there are lots of things in plans that don't wind up in codes because they don't lend themselves to being in a development code. So Arizona law doesn't say that everything in your plan has to be in your code. It says that what's in your code can't be inconsistent with what's in your plan. We've been asked to do those two parts of this. The general plan update, some people were involved, I think 10 years or 12 years ago, in the general plan that has been adopted so far. That was a much more extensive piece of work in the sense that people did a lot more outreach. Now, there's been a lot of outreach this time, but I want to emphasize that a general plan is a general plan update. It is not starting over. And the reason was, we were told, lots of people who live in Lake Havasu City don't want to start over. They like the place the way it is, they would like it reinforced, but as Stu mentioned when we started this meeting, you have now passed the 50,000 population threshold in Arizona, and that means you need to include more things in your plan than you did before. The state has small lists of items for small cities, medium lists for medium cities, large lists for large cities. It's very rational, and that's what, you've crossed one of those thresholds. So the update was to go back and see if the thing need to be tweaked to comply with Arizona law. It was not to start over. I've had some people say, "Well, why aren't you doing everything you did in 2002?" Answer, because the sense of the city was, people are generally happy with the direction the city's going. They don't want dramatic change, and therefore, we're doing an update. So that's the out plan. Now, I'm not doing that work. A woman named Darcy White of our firm has been doing that work. She will be back in, I think, the 17th, 18th of this month. It's nearing its conclusion in the sense that the things that needed to be added have been added and put out there for comment and revised. Things that needed to be tweaked have done that. But that is not what we're here to talk about today. Development code update is the part that Kristin and I are working on. Well, why are you doing that? Answer, because Arizona law says your code needs to be consistent with, not inconsistent with your plan, and because you made some amendments back in 2008. There was a process called the RUDAT that stands for Regional/Urban Development Action Team. A group came in to think through how particularly downtown, particularly McCullough Boulevard, should grow in the future. And it came up with a plan to bring more people near McCullough Boulevard to try to support the retail and the commercial businesses that are on there, have more of a mixed-use atmosphere along the main street of the town. That was adopted, it was a, it's called the RUDAT, and we were told when we came to town, people still like that vision. We have not been asked to undo the RUDAT vision. However, when it was turned into zoning, and the difference is this, general plans are advisory. Zoning is regulations. They are the rules by which you develop your property, or you're told that you can't do that in this location because it is not allowed. And that's what zoning is. That's what every city has except Houston. And basically, so the development code is saying, what part of the plan ideas should turn into law? When that work was done in 2008, I will say this publicly, I think it was done in an overly complicated way. It drew a lot of micro-management lines about exactly what could happen, exactly on which parcel and in which lot, exactly next to, or one block or two blocks from McCullough Boulevard. We were asked, as part of our job, to simplify the code by turning that into more general regulations that would still achieve the vision of a retail stronger shopping street, a stronger pedestrian place, a place where people could invest with greater knowledge about how much parking they had to provide. Although Mr. McCullough did a lot of very great things for the city, one of the things he did on parking was to create a parking in common scheme, which is extremely hard to administer and has made it difficult for people to invest along that commercial corridor because unlike most codes, you don't know how much parking or where exactly you need to put it. You'd need to kind of hold hands with your fellow property owners and figure out, well, I'm going to park on, let's use it jointly. That's what the plan was. Let's take all this parking area, you use some of it, I'll use some of it, but none of it belongs to me, none of it responsible to me. We're doing joint parking. So that is one of the things that was stymying investment. And so, we were asked particularly in the area along McCullough and the downtown, look, could you help us implement the vision of the RUDAT more simply than what it is in the law now? One of the things we've been told is, no one has been able to develop under the rules that were done in 2008. Now, again, it's 2008, economy's been down. Maybe the reason they haven't is that the economy's been down. But from our perspective, and we do this all over the country, when we look at it, we say, this is not the first time. We've looked at something this complicated and been asked by a city, please make it simpler. The developers are telling us this is too complicated to meet all these rules. We can't meet them all. If that's what you really mean, we'll invest somewhere else. So we've been asked to simplify. That's the main portion of it. However, over time, all zoning codes wind up, well, not all, many wind up with districts that are written on the books, but they're not anywhere in the city. They're not applied on the ground anywhere. We usually get rid of those because you're not using them. There are others that are so similar that we try to blend them and say, there's just a couple acres of this over here, and it's very, it's identical to, or almost identical to something else. So when we say simplify, we also look for opportunities to say, could we come up with a simpler menu of zone districts that would still achieve the vision that you want to achieve? There tends a tendency in a lot of cities, when somebody comes in with a slightly different idea, to create a new zone district for that. That's generally not a good practice because it results in a very micro-managed set of districts that each one is only applying to a couple of parcels. So, we believe in allowing more flexibility and trying to say, look, there are a lot of ways to skin the cat, there are a lot of ways to get good development, trying to say, you've got to do exactly this, is usually not a good way to get your way to your goal. So that's, when we give the background, that's what this development code is to do, and to try to illustrate it and use more drawings so that people can understand. Let's go ahead. The process, just to make it simple, is we did some international initial interviews, then we did, the city asked us to do a paper on how the city, what are the options for enforcing the code? A year ago, there was some controversy over what the city should do about enforcing the code. We did a little paper on that, telling them what the options were. Evaluating the current issues with the code. We put that out, better part of a year again, and said, again, our firm does this all over the country, when we look at your code, here's what we noticed that you're doing differently. Doesn't mean you want to be Des Moines or Denver or Santa Fe or Flagstaff. It means you seem to be using a complicated tool to do something that other people don't use that tool to get to. Or you're missing some stuff that most cities your size want to have in the code somehow. So then, we are at the, where the star is now. We then say, let's draft this, and I'll wait till the next slide to talk about the order in which we drafted. But our experience around the country is, it's easier for the public to engage if you divide the drafting into parts and then come and talk about each part. And we're now, as I said earlier, talking about Part 2 out of Part 3. Nothing's been finalized. The planning board has not even looked at it in terms of it. We do the, all of this is present a draft, explain how it would change what was done in the past in footnotes, come to meetings like this and try to explain it, meet with the steering committee, see what they think about it. Then at the end, put it all together, explain what changes were made in response to public comments, and then it will begin the process of approval. At that point, all of this is preface. All of this is getting a document that staff of the city of Lake Havasu says, we think this is what we want to do. We think it's, they've achieved as much of the simplification and alignment as they could. It lines up with the new general plan. We're not saying it's done, we're saying it's ready for the planning board to consider. And that will be public hearings, so you can come and talk about what you like and don't like. But all of this, up to this module and the next one, which is a couple of months from now, up to the summer of 2015, city has not acted on any of this. They have not been asked to act on any of this. They have hired us to draft, and we are doing that part of the work. Then they will consider whether they like what we've done in a public approval process. We do that in three parts, and then we help refine it as it goes through the adoption process. So just in these colors, you can see the green are what we call procedures and enforcement. Who needs a permit? Who gives that permit? What are the criteria by which they give the permit? Is it going to be a public hearing where people get to say, I like it, I don't like it? Or is it just walk in and ask Stu and say, this is my drawing, I meet the law, give me a permit? So green is, how do I get to yes? And we delivered that module back in the fall and posted it for public comment, just as we have here with a lot of footnotes as to how it would change things. The orange is, what is the menu of zoning districts and what are you permitted to do in each one of those? And that's what we're here to talk about today. The last part is form and development controls, and that we will be back to talk about in a couple of months. That is things like parking, sorting out this issue, which with due respect, has had, it was part of the original scheme for the city, but it had had significant unintended consequences that make it hard to do business here. Parking, do you need, are there regulations on outdoor lighting? What about landscaping? Do you need a buffer between your commercial use and residential use? How much of a buffer? If you did multifamily next to residential, single-family, do you need to buffer and plant trees and shrubs? How much? How wide? What do you need to do to protect the neighborhood? Anything like that. Circulation, how do you get through parking lots and out onto the streets so that it doesn't create traffic congestion? This red, form and development controls is really not, what can I do with my property? It is, how good does it need to be in Lake Havasu City? Is it, is it got the right elements that we think that will help implement the place we want to be and the plan we want to have? And that stuff, to be honest, in the city's current code is quite outdated. And so, that's the order in which we're doing it. I'm just putting this out here. On the left-hand side, you can see the proposal is that the new development code would have six chapters. And you can see what the chapters are, definitions is in there too, and we'll footnote those changes. I want to be clear because there were some questions before the meeting. No one has asked us to downzone the city, i.e. reduce people's heights and densities and quote-unquote, take property rights. Nobody's told us that. Nobody has told us to upzone the city and allow people to build higher and taller buildings than you have the right to build today. We have not been told that. We have been told, you have a plan, the plan's being updated, and the vision of the RUDAT that was done in 2008 is being incorporated into that vision. Figure out what set of rules and incentives would be the most efficient way for us to get the city in that direction. That's what we've been told. And we did have some discussion earlier about upzoning, downzoning, taller buildings, shorter buildings. That work hasn't been done! That's why I'm a little surprised at this comment. We haven't done the work. We're doing it now in Denver. We're trying to figure out, as you simplify it, what RUDAT had a lot of things in there as heights and densities. Do those belong in the code? Should they belong in the code? We tend to think, yeah, that we were told that was where you wanted to go. So as your plans have called for, you know, 10% or 5% of the city to change character to strengthen the commercial base of the city along the major corridors, that stuff we've been asked, see if you can reflect that in the code because right now, frankly, it's cobbled together in a way that's very difficult for investors to understand. So that's where we are. But let's go ahead and talk about the zoning districts and uses. There's, we're into the substance now. Kristin Sazowski, my colleague here, is going to talk about how we've tried to simplify the zone districts. And most of it takes place in the multi, excuse me, mixed use in the non-residential areas of the city. So let's talk about it. Let's keep our 2 and our 3 just, we're going to leave you alone there.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Don. Good morning, everybody. My name's Kristin Sazowski. Like Don said, bear with me, I have a little bit of a cold, so hopefully you can understand me well enough. I have, I'm an associate in Clarion's Denver office, and I've been working with Don since the initial kickoff of this meeting on all of these modules. So I've looked pretty closely at your zoning code, and I'm learning more about it every day. I too am a planner and attorney, and so we're trying, like Don said, our major goals are to simplify your existing code, align it with your updated plan, and look for ways that we can make it more consistent with state and federal law. But right now, I'm going to dive deeper into the specifics of Article 2, which is the zoning districts. And what you see on the screen right now, or again, like Don said, our major goal and what we heard when we were initially here, we've heard from staff and looking at your RUDAT and your code, oh, where did that pointer go? A lot of the heavy lifting in this table is occurring, is going to occur right here in your mixed-use districts. And in our, and our main priority is to simplify where there's overlaps and inconsistencies between some remaining overlay districts that exist in your code, in the new RUDAT, the form-based districts that came out of the RUDAT process. So on this table, on the left side are your existing zoning districts. Essentially, like most cities, broken down between residential, commercial, and employment, and special purpose, and your overlay districts. And on the right-hand side are our proposed consolidations. And this, and this is what we're here to talk through. So nothing has been decided just now from, based on feedback that we got yesterday from the steering committee about some inconsistencies in the code that don't reflect current practice. One of our consolidations, we're probably not going to move forward with. So this is absolutely what we're here to talk through today. In terms of, so...
Do you want to go through?
Yeah, we'll start with, we'll go next to residential. So currently, you have nine residential districts, and we do like to hopefully consolidate and remove obsolete districts, but in this case, we're going to be moving forward with nine districts, and mainly because of these additions here. These are residential districts that correlate to your special development areas in Uptown McCullough, the South Gate District, and the Commercial and Health District. So just to jump back up to the top, RA, Residential-Agricultural, no changes there. RE in Golf Course, we're proposing to combine because currently, your golf course, while it is existing on your zoning map, it doesn't appear in your code text. And so that's an example of a simple consolidation where, because your residential estate flanks your golf course, we're going to combine those two districts together. R1, which most of you probably reside in, it's the 80% of your community, we're just carrying that district forward. R2 and R3, we have a proposition here, but most, that is where we found, we learned of an inconsistency yesterday, so those are most likely going to remain the same, R2 and R3. RMH, the Mobile Home District, the main difference you'll see there is the change to the Manufactured Home District, and that's simply to align, Mobile Home is an obsolete, outdated term that doesn't appear in federal laws any longer. So to keep you consistent with the law, we're referencing that district as the Manufactured Home District. Now, RM, that, R4 and R5 are your higher density, multiple-family districts. They both currently allow 10 to 20 DU's per acre. I don't think, right now, you've seen that, the market hasn't really pushed those kinds of densities, but that was a vision that you guys had existed, had previously. And because those districts are often near one another, and they're very similar in terms of their dimensional standards as well, which like Don said, we haven't drafted Module 3 yet. And Module 3 will look at dimensional standards like setbacks and heights. But on our cursory review, these two districts are very similar, so it made sense to just carry them forward as an RM district. And I'm going to go on to the next slide to give a better sense of the RUMS, RCHD, and RSD consolidations. Oh, and one of our goals, there's a question about, you know, potentially, why does the general plan of the code, you know, grow in length? And even if the text is minimized, we're including more graphics to give you a better picture of what you can do on your property. And so that will grow potentially the thickness of your code that you may unfortunately have to carry around. And these are just some of the examples of axonometric drawings that we have prepared, and we show the dimensional standards that will be provided for you, but as you can see, there's actually no dimensions because those haven't been decided on yet. And they're probably not going to change all that much from what is currently allowed. So your mixed-use districts. So again, on the left-hand side of your column, on the left-hand side of this table are your existing districts, and the right hand is what's proposed. And this will remain in your code initially, just as you transition to this new code to help you understand what changes were put in place. And so our first suggestion is that a mixed-use neighborhood district could help to further McCullough's original vision that we saw in the code, but we haven't seen implemented in practice. And what we saw in the code was that you have a CN, a Commercial Neighborhood District, a CO, a Professional Office District, a CR, Commercial Residential District, and a CRMU, Commercial Residential Mixed Use District. And there are some differences between these. The Commercial Neighborhood sought to bring smaller-scale businesses and neighborhood services into the residential areas, but that really never came to fruition. And if that's something, we did hear that that is something that the community could be interested in. And so right now, we're proposing that a mixed-use neighborhood district, if the community's interested in it, could achieve that vision for the smaller-scale business nearer to your residential areas. And these districts are largely unused. CR, we learned yesterday, even though the name implies that it's smaller-scale commercial and residential, it was really only intended to bring commercial closer to residential on the island district. So again, this is our proposal, but there could be some tweaks that are made along the way. And then you currently have a mixed-use district, and we're just carrying that forward as a general mixed-use district. So this would be a more intense mixed-use district, whereas this would be a smaller-scale mixed-use district, appropriate for neighborhood settings. And in creating this district, we pay close attention to additional regulations necessary for neighborhood protection because it will be located closer to existing homes. And examples of that, which we haven't looked at yet, may be additional landscaping or buffering requirements, or step backs in heights as you get closer to the residential areas. Did you want to comment on that, Don?
No, let's move on to the next one.
Okay, and so, like Don had mentioned, you're, one of the big areas that we're really trying to unravel and simplify and encourage investment are in your special areas. Uptown McCullough, the Commercial Health District, you're looking, or, and we can see that professional health services have grown in that area, and that's also your connection between Uptown McCullough and Commercial Riverwalk. And so we're really trying to help the code, to use the code to help you see the investment in these areas that you want. And so...
Great. Well, I mean, I want to back up. I do want to jump in here.
Sure, no, go ahead.
Some of you are questioning, you know, come on, really? You're going to simplify? Let me point this out, guys. This is what you have today. You have eight different districts that are trying to say what happens along the area from London Bridge up to where we are now along McCullough Boulevard. Four old ones, four new ones, but inside these, inside that first line, you want us Uptown McCullough, there are four different sub-districts in there. So we have four plus four, but inside these, there is another six or eight inside, buried in there, where the text says, oh, actually, this is not one place, it's four places. And each one has a different set of regulations. So four plus, let's call it 10 generously to what you have now. These did not repeal these. They coexist. And if you're an investor trying to figure out what I can build commercially in the downtown of Lake Havasu, you don't know. And frankly, staff has a hard time, and citizens are quite divided about which of these is supposed to apply. These are on the books, these are on the books. They are not consistent. You can't do both. And that's why we're trying to simplify it. The answer is to look, put all the stuff down, say, what do they intend with the RUDAT? What are the base property rights? Let's go back, I want to go back still, and say, really what's going on here is, you have a mixed-use area right next to Upper McCullough, you have a mixed-use area down in the area near the Health Science, you have some areas, because your own plans, not my plans, your own plans, said, there are portions of the medical area that should just be commercial. They shouldn't have residential. They're not mixed-use, they're just commercial. I didn't make that up. Your RUDAT said that. And then South Gate had the same thing. We've got really some areas that are supposed to be commercial, and then you saw that Kristin said there were three new residential districts. Because when we try to look through these 10 coexisting ideas of different regulations that trip over each other and say, what did they intend? This is what we come up with. These are, there is a mixed-use here, there's commercial, there's a mixed-use here, there's commercial, and there are three residential districts that now are grouped with the other residential districts. Because your plan said, on the edges of these areas, before you get close to the commercial corridor, we want some housing that will buffer the housing behind it. It can be a little taller, that's your idea, not mine. But that stuff will be inherent. So when you say, really, Don, you're going to simplify it? Answer is, yes, we are going to simplify it. We're going to simplify it dramatically because it would be very hard to make it more complicated than what you have now. So that's why we're doing this. Yeah, let's go ahead to the next one. Great. Go ahead, go ahead. Yep.
So like, like Don mentioned, so this is Uptown McCullough, and it's probably a snapshot that's familiar to you if you were involved in the RUDAT process. And even, we're looking to make this two districts, whereas right now, it's divided into four different transects, which we're referring to as sub-areas. So you have your core, your central, and your general sub-zones, and those are distinguished by the different colorings on each parcel. And like Don had mentioned before, this is very, very detailed, very fine-grained, and nearly, it's street-specific. Your standards call out, there's specific landscape and parking plans along McCullough, along Mesquite, along a coma. And we're trying to, we have brought those site and dimensional elements forward into this mixed-use district, but we're calling it one mixed-use district because all of these areas allow all the same uses. They, in the RUDAT, the RUDAT calls for commercial, office, residential, and that's the definition of mixed-use. So it makes sense to merge them all together and create one mixed-use district. But also, like Don said, we want to preserve your solely residential sub-area, which was also identified in the RUDAT. And that's these red ovals that flank the mixed-use district. And so we're referring to that as your RUMS district. And then, and then this slide just furthers the example and accentuates the complexity of what's existing because not only, not only do you have all these different transects, but underlying these transects, because like Don said, zoning has not been repealed or rezoning has not occurred, underlying these transects, this is your zoning map. And so this area is the core, which we understand that it was rezoned, but from my reading, and if anybody reads the zoning map for the first time, this light pink color, I believe, is C1 or C2. So even though it is UMS, it's not really reflected. You can see, so this teal over here actually is the Commercial Health District. And that was the one district that was rezoned following the form-based districts that were created as part of the RUDAT process. And so essentially, what we're looking to do is the same thing here, so that when you look at the zoning map, when you look at your code, it's easy to understand what regulations apply to this, to this area.
Rather than having a block and block specific.
Okay, and so, so those are the mixed-use districts, and like you said, we usually, we like to divide a code into residential areas, your mixed-use districts, which include residential, and then special purpose. In the existing code, you, special purpose, your special purpose districts encompassed mixed-use, encompassed South Gate, kind of encompassed your overlay districts, so that wasn't clear. So how we like to look at special purpose districts is anything that does not include residential, so non-residential areas. And your commercial areas, so C1 and C2, those are traditional, limited, and general commercial areas along arterials that we are, we're going to carry forward without any changes. Currently, you have two industrial districts, this M1P and M2. And M1P is a light industrial, industrial park area that we're proposing is a prime area to transform into a business park zoning um, is a prime area to, to transform into a business park zoning district. Because this industrial park does allow currently for campus-like research and development settings, and, and to encourage the economic development that we heard that you're looking to bring to Lake Havasu, and encourage, um, to maybe attract some of the medical professionals and younger, younger professionals. Um, we're proposing a business park, which many communities have, as opposed to a light industrial setting, when there really isn't that much industrial to begin with in the community. Um, in the heavy manufacturing district, we're simply proposing to rename is, is a general I industrial district. Um, and, and so, and then another, another considerable consolidation, um, which may look considerable, but may not, the effects of it may not actually materialize for a while, um, is the consolidation of your light agricultural areas, which, as I'm sure you know, are the zoning districts that, 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 that binds the majority of your, your, your community currently. And, um, it's the areas where you can grow, but it's also why growth is limited, because most of that land is, is governed by the federal or state, or, or by another jurisdiction, federal and state, um, government agencies. Um, so we're proposing that the light agricultural in your current conservation-preservation district, which, which promotes active and passive recreational uses along the lake, similar to your body beach area in your island district, two areas that, that you also, um, that also came out of the RUDAT process, that you wanted to, to focus on in order to encourage, you know, public access and public amenities in, in concert with additional but reasonable development along the island and along the waterfront. Um, but those districts haven't, haven't been used. And so we saw this as a prime opportunity to, to, to merge them all together into one conservation-preservation district.
I want to, I want to jump in here and say that, that was a Clarion has recommended, because when you look at the huge amount of land around the edges of Lake Havasu City, it's zoned light agricultural. When I look out there, I don't see a lot of agriculture happening. There's not a lot of farming or ranching that happens around the edges of Lake Havasu. It's really zoned that way, because state law requires that you allow some uses, and it's owned by the state and federal governments, most of it. So it's called light agricultural, but in fact, it's very limited is what you can do. We were the ones, Clarion said, let's call it what it is. It's really not. They're not growing anything, and they're not growing cows out there. And so let's call it what it is. It's conservation-preservation. However, this is another area where the steering committee yesterday said, Don, whether that's technically true or not, it's going to confuse people. It sounds like you can't ever develop that area, even though our proposal is to rename it and not take away any uses, to leave the same uses that the state and federal government have now on those lands. Our proposal is to simply rename it what is more accurate, but we got pushback on that and said, Don, that's going to confuse people a lot. Just keep it light, light agricultural. So we may just keep it with the current name, just because it's a confusing thing. Our proposal has never been to take away any of the uses. It was simply to rename that district, so. Are we done with this?
The only thing is the overlay districts.
I will. I'll go through that quickly. Overlay districts are a second layer of zoning that supplements. It doesn't replace what's below, but it supplements it. The classic ones are airports. Airports have height limitations. They have things that are, keep people away from where the airplanes are landing and taking away, taken off. We're carrying that over. Northern Kiowa has some design standards that are unique to that street, because it's somewhere between a C1, C2 district, but they had some design standards. Um, we didn't know how important it was to carry over. Yesterday, we heard from people saying, yeah, carry it over. That street has a unique character. People wanted to preserve it. Go ahead and keep it. So we're keeping it. Plan development, planned unit development is negotiated zoning. Every city has one. You can come in and ask city council to zone your land any way you want. You can always do that. They don't have to say yes, but you can always ask them. And if you don't find any of the zone districts that meet your needs, you can say, I want to negotiate it. I will give you this if you give me that. I've got a great design, so good that you should just approve me, because it's going to be a ma- great asset to Lake Havasu City, and here's what you get out of it. I need a new zone district. Right, well, so PD is how you do that. Your current PD, and I'll say it publicly, is about as complex as I have ever seen, because it has ten different sub-areas. And it says, well, you can come negotiate with the city, but in this little defined area over here, the best you're going to do is X. And in this little defined area over here, the best you're going to do is Y. And in this little defined area, there are ten of those. Best you can do is Z. We think that's not a wise way to go forward, because the nature of PD is that it's negotiated. You're going to come in, and if it's good enough for the city to approve, they're going to approve it. And if they don't, they don't. If you walked into, let's say, Area 3, and you look at the code and say, and it says, the best you can do is X, and you're a developer who wants to do something else, there's nothing to stop you from going in and saying, I want more. The code can say, you can't get beyond X, but you can't bind city council not to consider an application for a new district that allows them to do something different. And so our, our answer, and we've given this advice to other cities, is simplify it. Don't put ten sets of sub-rules in there, say. Like most cities, you have a right to come in and negotiate for the zoning that you want to, and if your city council is persuaded, they will approve it. And if they're not persuaded, they will not approve it. No matter what I wrote, it's a right of people to ask the city to amend the zoning ordinance and the zoning map. And so they could do it anyway, which raises the question to people like me. Then why do you have these little ten sets of rules? Because they gum up the code, and the truth is, they don't. Any developer who wants to ask for something different is going to ask for it anyway, and you can consider it when it gets there. So that's kind of where we're going in simplifying PD. Let's go quickly through the second part, and we won't take as much time. You have lists of uses in many parts, in the PD ordinance, planned development ordinance, in the RUDAT stuff, and in the base old zone districts of the city, and they don't call the same things by the same names. And so we strongly recommend the use of a table like this. Now, go ahead and put your circles up here. Up at the top, it's grouped into the three categories. Uh, Kristen said, there's a group of residential districts. There's a group of mixed-use districts in blue and special-purpose districts in yellow. Uh, the top row below that tells you their new names. The row below that tells you what the old zone districts are that are getting consolidated into that area. Um, this lists all the uses by category and subcategory, so if you want to amend the code in the future, you can come in and say, um, you know, all right, we need to add an industrial use. Well, let's not just flip through the whole code page by page to see where something like that is listed. Let's say, well, it's sort of, it's kind of like a warehouse and distribution. Should we add a new use? Because we can find where it is. It's under industrial uses. Let's figure out, is, should we add a new use? Or can we just amend the one that we have to say, well, this is a good idea. Let's just amend the definition of that use, to say it includes this new idea. So down here is a more orderly way on the left-hand side. You look across the cells, and it says either, there's a P. This is a permitted use. You don't need anybody's permission to do it in this zone district. Or it's conditional. You do need a conditional use permit to do it in this zone district. Or A, which means accessory. You can do it if you're doing something else on the site that is legal. So basically, that's, and in the right-hand column are conditions that are attached to some, but not all of the uses. So that's where they go. Let's go to the next one. Here's an example. In single-family detached and attached, there are cross-references at the right. Right at the end of this table, you will find listed, uh, in the same order, the conditions. And here are the ones that we've put. In the CP district, you can do a house, but it's going to be accessory to a principal agricultural and open space use. Well, that's what the law says now, but it's easier to find this way. In a single-family dwelling, the state law of Arizona, whether you like it or not, says that group homes for protected classes of six or fewer people need to be treated like single-family homes. If you have a home, you can do six or fewer of a protected class of people that need to have, that are protected by Arizona's Fair Housing Act. The federal Fair Housing Act is broader than that, and we are recommending that you align yourself so that you cover the groups that are covered by the Fair Housing Act at the federal level, because you can comply with Arizona law, but it doesn't stop anybody from coming in and suing you for being in violation of the federal law. Now, right before our con, our meeting, somebody talked to me about federal laws, and I said, there's no federal law that requires you to update your plan, and there isn't. But there are a handful of areas, less than two hands' worth, where the federal government does limit what you can do. This is one of them. The Fair Housing Act says you need to allow small group homes in residential areas. And if you don't, you're liable to be sued, and you'll probably lose, because it's a federal law. And Arizona law is similar, but not quite as broad as the federal law. Um, the other areas, we'll go on to the next one. Uh, let's go on to the next. This is an example of how you use a table. I do want to clarify this. Because of this confusion, and every city and every state that we've worked in has this issue. You've got federal fair housing laws, you have state fair housing laws. Then you have state group home licensing laws, which don't align with those categories. So who can do a group home where is always a confusing issue in every city we work in. We try to straighten it out. What we try to do is get rid of some of your categories. As a result, we've said, look, there are really only two things. There's a small group home, and that, under Arizona law, has to be treated like a single-family dwelling. That's just, that's what it is. And there's a large one. If you're doing more than six people, it's a group, excuse me, a residential care facility. You can do it in a, in the multifamily districts, the broader districts, and you can ask for it in residential districts. Now, yesterday, our steering committee said, look, this is residential care facility. This is more than six. So you're talking seven, eight, ten people being cared for in a house. We put in that you could ask for permission to do that in a single, in these residential agriculture estate and R1, which is most of the city. The, we need to correct this, because the group yesterday, our steering committee said, take those Cs out of there. We would, we, we understand that Arizona and federal law require that we allow small ones in those areas. We don't want to leave the door open for anybody to ask for permission to do more than six in those areas. So as a result of our conversation yesterday, uh, we will take those Cs out. There will not be, you could still come in in the multifamily districts up here and ask for permission to do more than six people, but you will not be able to in the eighty-five, ninety percent of Lake Havasu that is single-family housing, uh, houses on lots. Um, and rooming and boarding houses are no longer, we've eliminated those, because you don't have any other than as a vehicle to accommodate group homes, and we've now figured out a simpler way to handle the group home obligations. I mentioned the federal government sneaks its maker into your business in a few areas. These are them. Well, the, of the top two. Adult businesses, unfortunately for many people, are free speech. Uh, you need to allow some of them. We've tried to align this with Arizona and federal law as to where you need to allow adult businesses. Telecommunications facility, the government does not allow you to turn down some types of antennas and laws. And it also tells you, you got to process them fast. You got to process them in ninety or a hundred and fifty days. You may not like that, but it is the law. And so we have put in alignments between how you handle cell towers, so they align with changes in Arizona law and federal law in those areas. And finally, medical marijuana. Arizona amended its medical marijuana statute, which tells you how the cities need to deal with medical marijuana. We have tried to align with that new state, the revisions in the state statute. So these are areas where some other level of government has changed the way that, that local governments have to address these issues, and we're trying to align with those requirements. We have added some new ones, just, uh, you can look at the table if you want. Cohousing is developments that are getting more popular a little bit. People own their own houses, but they're small houses with small kitchens, and then they share a common room and a common kitchen for group meal, meals. You don't have to have them, but somebody's going to walk in the door someday and say, do you allow them? Uh, enough cities are saying, yeah, that'd be good. Well, let's have some standards and allow that to happen. It's good for retirees who don't want to take care of a big house, don't want to live in an apartment. Let's let that happen. We've added that. Vacation rentals is a hot topic. Uh, I have feeling people disagree about what to do about that. Our proposal is that it does get listed, because if it's not, Stu's phone's going to ring off the hook with people saying, what about vacation rentals? So we list it. The conditions are that you need to have a license from the city, you need to have a permit, a license, and pay fees to do that. And the reason is this, even though most people, you know, you're divided into two groups. Either you hate the idea, or you like renting out your house and you like the money. And it's hard to get a consensus. The issue is, how do you enforce it? Most cities are coming to a conclusion that they don't have the staff to troll the VRBO website every day to figure out who's renting their house, and to ding them on zoning violations over and over. So you create a license, and you say, you got a choice. If you want to rent out your house, we got some standards. No more than this, no more than this many people, can't have parties late at night. You can come and get a permit, pay us a fee, and we will know that you're doing this, and that's the way it goes. Or you can ignore us, in which case, we will wait till the neighbors call, and then we'll cite you for a zoning violation, and that's a fine that accrues every day. So we pride it up. The idea that most cities are coming up with is, since it's almost impossible to prevent, and I, I mean that clearly, I can write it that it's not allowed. And if you ask me to, I will write it that it's not allowed. You will have a hard time doing it, because people do it anyway. And so the issue is, do you really want that situation? Or do you want to have a situation where the city has some sense of who's doing it? It's collecting some fees to deal with the extra police calls and the extra trash pickups and the complaints that they get, and try to say, look, you can do it, but no more than, not a big, not a big party, small numbers of people. That's our proposal. Retirement, continuing retirement, retirement communities are places where you live in your own home. And then as you age, and may be able to not do that, move into a multifamily or an assisted care, where people are providing daily needs. And then as you lose your faculties, you move into a medical facility, and you can have them as part of one integrated development. Those are going to be more needed, because so much of, so many of us are at retirement or post-retirement age. You could have it separately. Many cities say, we don't care. We got a hospital district, we got a nursing home area over here, we got duplexes. But my parents live in one where they're all together, and they kind of like the fact that all their friends, when they have to move into the assisted facility, they don't have to start over. They know those people. They've lived next to them. And when they move, you know, God forbid, into the Alzheimer's unit or a medical facility, they will know some of the people there, because that's where they've lived. And so these are getting more popular, because they provide people the ability to live with friends as they age. So we have added that as something that could be done in Lake Havasu. And finally, community gardens are popular. Could I buy a lot? Uh, this guy's trying to sell the lot. He may want to build multifamily or a house, but he's not ready to yet, or he can't find a buyer. But I'd like to buy it or rent it and do a community garden here. We've said it's possible. Uh, we've added it, because most new codes have it, because of your water, because of your soils. I don't think you'll see a lot of them, but that's, the idea is, let's think ahead at things that people are asking for and add them into here, so we have added them in. Um, last two minutes is, um, your current code does not do a good job of distinguishing between what I can do with my lot and accessory uses. It's okay to do this, because I'm doing, for example, it's okay to do rental watercraft, because I'm running a hotel. I can, I'm on the waterfront, I can do this. Or I can do an outdoor sale, because I'm running a store. It's okay to have an outdoor sale four times a year, but it's not okay to just walk onto a vacant lot and put out velvet Elvis paintings and have a sale, because you feel like having a sale. That's, that's not a business. That is a, that, it's okay for you to do an accessory sale, not to just walk on and do an outdoor sale like a flea market. Your current code doesn't distinguish between accessory and temporary uses and primary uses. So the current table that we've put in there has a separate section that says, these are things that are fine, as long as you're doing something that's allowed as a primary use of the property. You can't just walk on and do this if you don't own the property, because the owner said you could. So... Um, last slide. Um, we have mentioned earlier that the, the last part of this. I, I know that yesterday at the meeting, there was some frustration, Don. I don't, I don't know what to think of your consolidation of districts, because you haven't told me whether the heights are going to be higher or the densities are going to be greater. Well, and we understand the frustration. The good news is, we'll be backed with that information in a couple of months. It is really hard to do this all at once. It's easier in our experience to do it sequentially. So in a couple of months, we'll come back and we'll present form and development, and that includes heights and densities. I've already made my shtick. We haven't written them. We haven't been told how to write them. We're told to try to do follow-through on these visions of consolidation and the RUDAT vision and the comp plan, try to figure out the least complicated and confusing way to get there. And so that's what we're, and, and those of you who've downloaded the document can see, we footnote all the changes. So if a height is going to be allowed higher next to your house, we will footnote that. And we will say, this is an increase from the current code. If for some reason, there, I don't, not aware of any, we look at one and say, wow, that's an awful tall building to put right next to single-family homes. That really shouldn't be sharp. If we do that, then we will footnote and say, this one came down. This is too high. This should not be that high here. So, but we will footnote the changes, so that we don't get accused of bamboozling people. We're, we haven't been told to bamboozle you. We've been told to explain it and then try to make it simpler. So that's where we are. And then Darcy White, if you are interested in the general plan update, our colleague will be here in two weeks to talk through the changes that are recommended in that, and that is near the end of the process, rather than... This one, I would say, is two-thirds of the way through the process. Hers is almost at the end of the process. And we are trying to align the code regulations with the refinement in the general plan. There aren't, there aren't a lot. It's not a bold new demand, uh, direction. It is a continuation of the character of the town to comply, with the added stuff to comply with Arizona law, and then we're trying to align with the changes that are made in that process. Any questions about what we've done? Or, sure?
Previously, as far as churches.
Yeah.
Through the code, and they're so hard to find, where you can, where you can't.
Okay.
What other, I see some on the scope runs, some here and there. But there's nothing in the code. I can't find it.
Okay.
I said, no, yes, maybe, you know.
Can we get the code out? We...
Why? And you just look, and you put in the search for churches.
We have done...
I don't want to be that loud here.
Okay. Question is, his question was, where do we find churches? And why is it so hard to find where you can do a church and where you can't, right? Yeah. Well, they are listed in the table, uh, here. Kristen's looking it up right now. We, you might not be happy with our answer. Our answer is, it's, it's religious institutions, because it needs to cover mosques, and it needs to cover synagogues, and it needs to cover temples. It has to, you have to define them without regard to a particular faith. But there's now a line in there that says religious, and it lists, yes, no, yes, no. So as to which zone districts you can do it.
Yeah, well, there's some that have, there's some in industrial or commercial areas.
Yeah, well, there's some that have, there's some in industrial or commercial areas.
Yeah.
You know, and they, as long as they keep the lease going, they're okay. Then you see one popping up somewhere else, and the question comes up, "Well, I was involved in, our church had to move and looking for a location."
Yeah.
But going through the code, I really.
Couldn't find it.
I couldn't find it. You know, very hard or very limited. If they would just spell out, "This is the process," you know, good or bad.
Yep.
But just, you know, go see Stuart or do something.
No, no, that's the wrong answer. He's wincing back there. No, no. No, our, our goal is to have a code so that 99 times out of 100, you don't have to go see Stuart, you can look it up in the code. So you'll be, with the exception that we call it religious institutions rather than churches. You will find it on one line, and at the end, for example, some cities say, and Kristen just tells me, "It's allowed in most of the zone districts." And we've clarified that churches are allowed in most of the zone districts. But in some cities, they say, "Well, if it's in, mixed in with housing, we don't want a megachurch. We want a smaller, you know, it's fine up to 40,000 square feet or 20,000 square feet, but megachurches belong in big places." And so you could, in that right-hand column, say, "In the following zone districts, it's limited to this size, and you know, the other districts, it's fine." We haven't put that in yet.
Well, this is, I'm referring to on College Drive, and it's a, a commercial plaza.
Yeah.
Okay? We rented a unit, it's 5,000 square feet.
Yep.
But we can't rent it from the owner, because if we do, you know, the lease runs out in a year. We're out in a cold. It's not allowed in that district.
Okay, well, it.
But, you know, you're allowed now, but is it gonna be kicked out?
Oh, well, Kristen tells me, well, it, it's allowed in all the commercial districts under the, under our draft. Remember, our draft hasn't been approved yet.
Yeah.
But the draft says it's allowed in all the commercial districts now.
All the rest of the PMB. Yes, we have five.
There's what?
Property lease terms.
M1P, but it would be BP, and it'd still be allowed. That would be allowed as conditional use in that district now. You would have to go get a conditional use permit for that to use it.
Okay.
But it's not time limited. Once you got the permit, you're allowed to stay forever.
Well, yeah. Well, right now, the, the owner says, "No, we can't, because the city won't allow it."
Well, I think, I was afraid you were gonna ask me a hard question. I think you're gonna be happy with the result.
All right. That's what I like.
All right. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am. I think you've been in a meeting before. You look familiar to me. Go ahead.
I, I have. You mentioned that it's difficult to get through the general plan. I gave up.
Uh-oh.
There were so many references to somewhere else to look, and I was taking too many, too much time asking. So I'm hoping that what you're doing, you're saying you're clarifying it, which is great. I didn't hear much on the single residential housing tonight. Is it covered in, online, or?
Yes, it is. But the, the short answer, let's get the slide up here. R1, 80% of the city is zoned R1, which is a house on a lot. That's not changing. There are two, RE is larger lot, residential estate, and then you have a, a zone district called golf course. But when you read that, it doesn't say you can do a golf course. It's a zone district for housing around a golf course, and it, there's nothing unique about it. It just was applied around the golf course to the residential. We're recommending, because they're, they're the same, they just have different names, that those come together. So RA, residential agriculture, residential estate and golf course, R1, that's 90% of Lake Havasu City. Those are not proposed to be changed.
As written now?
Well, we hope they're clearer to read, but we have not said you can or can't do something in those districts that you can or can't do, to do. No one's asked us to make more uses available or to make more uses unavailable in those districts. They're, they're housing districts, so.
And you mentioned also to contact you with input. Do you have contact info?
Sure, sure, sure.
Well, let's go ahead and do this, and then we'll keep the question going.
Just so you know, oh, boy, that's hard to read. Sorry, we'll have to fix that for tomorrow. The third part of this, I'll, I'll get to the contact info. The first part, third part of this is, as I said earlier, how good does it have to be? Parking, landscaping, lighting, design, character. We'll get back with that in a couple of months. That's the third of the three parts, and after those three, you will have all the pieces of the puzzle. So one of the questions we often get is, "Are you increasing the heights? Are you increasing the density? Are you reduce?" We have not been told to upzone Lake Havasu City. We have not been told to downzone Lake Havasu City. When we consolidate things, we have to make some judgment calls as to which numbers we choose. We haven't done that work yet. So the short answer is, we haven't been told to make dramatic changes. We're gonna come back and explain, but that's part of module three. So if you came because you're very interested in height or density, it's the next meeting, I'm afraid. Now, and then I was pointing out that the general plan was, was, there's another meeting on that, but here's the contact information. We do ask you to pass it on to Stu. Well, Stu could pass it on to me. Stu passes on everything to us, but we, I've said this at public meetings in the past, you need to pass it on to him, because he needs to know what the conversations are. So if you send it to me, I'll, I'll give you a card. You can send it to me, but I'm gonna forward it to Stu, so. Sounds good. Anything else, ma'am?
Just one more question.
Oh, sorry.
What, you're working on this plan, or you're working with a committee within the city?
Yes, Stu.
Actually, you might want to describe the general plan and the zoning. I don't know if you, did you do that right away?
No, we were trying to make this a shorter presentation, so we didn't. We, our firm has been hired to do both of them, but we, Kristen and I are not working on both. We're working on the development code. Darcy White has been heading that group up. She's been having, Stu, I think you should describe the various ways they've been doing outreach and meetings for that.
Yeah, she has, in several ways, actually, she, a very large internet presence. We do have a, on the city website, lower left-hand corner, there's a button, and you can get all the information you want about the general plan on there. But you can also get the zoning code information on there as well. And every time there's meetings, we run display ads, we try to get the news media to, to give us front-page articles. That doesn't always work. But we've, we've done a lot to encourage public participation. Matter of fact, I think Darcy's next meetings are 17th and 18th?
Correct.
Okay.
What committees?
I'm sorry, the committees. There is a separate and distinct committee for each one of these two areas. The zoning, or for the development code, committee consists of five members. They were here earlier, from two to four, to discuss specific items. And then on the general plan, there's a committee, I think there's like 14, 14 people on that committee as well, and they meet typically right before the public meetings as well.
Are those meetings open to public attendings?
Yes, they are. All of them are.
And how do you find out about the meetings? Because I have asked before, and we have not been able to.
One way you could do it is you could give me your email address, and I will put you on that notification list, and we'll just send it when we send it to them. I can do that, too.
This woman had a question.
Regarding, regarding group home use.
Yeah.
You allude to protected classes. What about group homes for non-protected classes?
Well, the, excuse me. They're included in that. The point is that that definition covers the protected classes, but if you have another a non-protected, there aren't very many that are outside the protected classes, but if there are some, for example, what if you had a, a, a group facility for people who are actually still using alcohol? I'm just making this up. It's not a protected class, because they're not in a treatment program, but they are, it's transitional housing for people still addicted to alcohol and not, not in a program to get off of it. If you had that, it would not be treated as a single-family home. So you couldn't do it, you would, you couldn't, it wouldn't be covered as a permitted use in the residential zone districts. You could do it as part of a residential care facility, as a big, even if it was a small one. You could do it as a larger facility in the higher-density residential districts and the mixed-use districts. Do you think that's right, or would you like to, are you concerned that there be a good opportunity to do those kinds of group homes? Okay. In residential districts, too? Okay. Let us think about it. That's an interesting comment. Is there a particular type of group you're worried about? Because there aren't, the ones that usually come up that cause controversy are, are all protected classes. So who are you thinking of that's?
Not specifically, except sometimes, sometimes people are trying to put, put places safe houses.
Yeah. Oh, 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 like, like domestic violence?
Right.
Or things like that?
Where they can't be, it's, it's hard to describe those in a public meeting, because the, just the very nature of that precludes.
Yeah. We're gonna have to think about that. I think, you know, it's a good question. If you're interested in, for example, let's talk about domestic abuse or shelters, that you wanted those to be available in the single-family zones, which would have a lot of merit going forward in terms of recovery for those folks. I think we'd need to make it, if I said it was a permitted use, that you just did it automatically, I think you'd have a political backlash, because people really are gonna have a hard time with that. They're okay with complying with the federal and state law, because nobody really wants to go to court over that. But, for example, that is not, you know, there's several categories. Homeless shelters are not in that category. So I think if you wanted them in there, we'd have to make them conditional uses, and that, and you could, excuse me, you could leave a door open, so there's a hearing about it, and people could have a hearing. It's not a very good solution, because once you get into a public hearing over domestic violence victims or alcohol users or somebody else, you're very likely to get comments from the public that are, they're talking about the nature of the people in that house, and they don't, and you don't really want a hearing about whether you like those kind of people or not. And so I will think if I can come up with a better solution, but so far, the normal solution is to say, "It's a conditional use, we just can't avoid that." If it's a federally protected class, then we can kind of make it so there's never that kind of a hearing. Nobody gets to complain about recovering drug users, because we don't have a hearing to, to let you say you don't like them. We just comply with the federal law. But it is hard to make, I don't know any cities that I know of that, that allow non-protected class group homes by right in residential neighborhoods. They all have to go through some sort of a permitting or an approval process with, with all the negative things that come with that, unfortunately. I'm glad you raised it, though. Yes?
I just want more. You mentioned, are you covering landscaping?
Next time. Yep.
Landscaping?
Yep.
Is that commercial or so, or is that also residential?
Usually, to be honest, we are, just started working on it. Usually, it covers all commercial. It usually covers multifamily residential. Most codes do not get into single-family residential, because it, and Stu says you don't either. It's just too, too controversial to walk into my yard and tell me, "I don't have enough trees," or "I got too many trees," or "I got the wrong kind of trees," and so.
I'm just talking, and I don't have a complaint, put it this way, but, you know, if you live on a, on a street.
Yep.
That was built under McCullough, you know, and then the city still owns six feet on both sides or so. Can you protrude into that?
With landscaping.
Everybody does, but, you know.
We will, we'll address that issue. We'll address that issue.
You know, but some people put big rocks there and stuff, which is fine.
Yeah.
But I don't want to put a big rock there and then have to move it. Yeah.
We will deal with that issue. Street frontage landscaping is a popular topic, and it gets, as you say, complicated, because certain things you can require on private property, but you can't make the city do it on public property. But you can create a way for them to actually have the permission of the city to do it on public property. So we will address that in the next module.
You mentioned several federal laws. Are you aware of the federal laws?
I'm sorry?
Do you put in the federal laws specifically for here in the state?
So city, make any zoning ordinance changes?
I don't believe there is such a federal law.
Well, there was a case several years ago, McNoe versus McCullough.
Okay.
It was in the Central District of California, federal court, and they ruled that Lake Havasu City is a planned community. As a planned community, zoning ordinances cannot be changed, because it falls under the Securities and Stock Exchange Administration regulatory and statutory scheme, where it's an investment. So because it was a planned community, somebody buys in here, they're buying into an investment.
So it was a federal court decision.
Federal court ruled that.
I'll have to defer to our city attorneys back here, who are, we're gonna, will look at it. I, I am, it would be very surprising if that holding, which may have been exactly true at that time, and I'm not an Arizona lawyer, I'm a land use lawyer, but I'm not an Arizona lawyer. It would be very rare to have a city of 50,000 in which its governing body was not able to use its legislative authority to make the changes to the rules that, that they felt were necessary to protect public health and safety and welfare. I, we, I understand, this is a very large planned community, but we write codes many times for planned communities, and to my knowledge, all the court decisions and those have said, "The fact that you had a plan, and you adopted the plan, and then you adopted laws consistent with the plan, does not mean that you can never change them. You're not cast in aspic for the time." But I will take it seriously. We'll go read that case. If it can't be done, it can't be done, but I'd be kind of surprised, because you guys have been updating your ordinance all the time. I just think you haven't been doing it very well, so I'm sorry.
Our local, our local city has ignored that federal finding.
Well, I, I take you seriously. You said it was Noe versus McCullough. N-O-E?
Yeah.
I'll be happy to look it up, and, and if, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm very interested in reading the case.
It was about 25, 25 or so years ago.
If it can't be done, it can't be done, but we will, we'll take it seriously and read the case. Thank you. Yes.
You've consolidated a number of various types of development areas together based on RUDAT. I did want to emphasize that RUDAT was brought in here to design things for McCullough Boulevard and extending somewhat down toward the channel. It was not to encompass the whole city under a RUDAT plan, number one.
That's right.
Number two, you're consolidating and simplifying things thereby allowing developers to develop different heights, to request those, to ignore our setbacks, to allow greater density, and I don't think that's necessarily what the citizens wanted here, based on the plan that they had originally. And you're, you're putting it into the whole city. And this, when they had surveys and were asked what they wanted, they did not necessarily want that increased height all over the city. They also wanted the development to be a, sound planning where it reflected the community. They, we are a tourist community and along the channel, I don't think the people want high-rise all along the channel, high-rise residential all along the channel. Our city council approved so many, but now with your new plan, does that not change it?
We haven't come up with the heights or densities yet, and that's, that's one of the things I would mention in losing this map. This map, it just broadly speaking, said really dense in the black area, lower and lighter in the light gray area, lower and lighter than that when you take the next tier out, and then purely residential kind of low-rise on the edges. We haven't written that stuff, but I do not want to imply that it's going to be one number. It may well not be one number. For example, we draft lots of codes that say, the maximum height, I'm making up this number, the maximum height in this area is 60 feet, but if you are adjacent to a single-family residential unit, then any portion of that building within 100 feet of the residential lot line has got to be 35 feet. It doesn't have to be one number. When you consolidate a zone district, you don't have to say, well, we either got numbers from here to here, I gotta choose this one, or I gotta choose this one. It's, that's not how it works. You don't have to draft it that way. And, and, and it won't be.
From what was presented yesterday, it appeared that the new developers could put in a request for 60 feet, for 90 feet, next to another facility that might be, what? A residential size?
Shorter than that, shorter than that, yeah. Well, your current.
Well, you know how our city will look?
Your, but your current code, you know, you, there was one thing done in here which you are, you are correct about, and that is this, we haven't drafted the dimensionals, but in the purpose statements for different zone districts in the zoning code, it includes language that is aspirational language, it should be like this. And I think you're right. I think that in one of those districts along the waterfront, the purpose statement did talk about 90 feet. That's, I don't take that as a decision we have made. We have, we carried over the purpose statement. You and others have said, we think that's too high. If you're gonna go that high, you should ask for permission and explain why the design is right and see what city council does, but let's keep it lower. I, I take you very seriously, not only along the waterfront, but along these transitions to neighborhoods, we haven't done it yet.
And in some of the PDs, we can get rid of setbacks. Why? Setbacks give our city more sound development where you have space between some of the developments. To allow a developer to choo, pick and choose and consolidate these districts to, to simplify them is wrong. What we're doing, you're taking away from what the citizens originally wanted here, in my humble opinion. Thank you, I need to give this to someone else.
Well, no, let me, let me respond a little bit though. The only place, I mean, speak generally, because we haven't drafted the setbacks. What we have done is say, you shouldn't bury lot-specific setbacks in 10 little slices of the PD. And I want to be clear, it appears to me, and I could be completely wrong, that when the RUDAT was done and it was embodied in these, I say, Don says, complicated set of lot-specific and tier-specific standards, which are very detailed, and then with boots and, you know, bootstraps put into the PD ordinance, it looks to me like what was done was, let's set the number as low as possible, and then let's say, we're gonna, we're gonna quote unquote, and this is not your words, it's mine, push them through a PD process. They want more than that, make them go through a PD process and we'll tell you exactly how much you can get through that process. I gotta tell you, pushing people through a PD process is not good governance. That is just telling people, we're gonna give you a very little. If you like property rights, you do not like this. I'm gonna give you as little as I can, and then I'm gonna make you wheedle and deedle, deedle with me, deal with me to get more. I'm gonna make you make your case everywhere along the way, and I'm gonna tell you the outer parameters of how much I'm gonna listen to you before I do it. Now, I understand that was negotiated heavily, but you've hired a firm that does this around the country. I'm not trying to make you like everybody else, I'm trying to make your zoning tools efficient. That is a really inefficient zoning tool. If you think 90 feet is too high, we say 60. If you think 60 is too high, we set it at 50. If you say 50 is too high, I say, whoa, somebody's gonna sue you for a takings because they had the right to do X before, and you have now taken, you can manipulate these numbers, but at some point, you have changed them so dramatically, and Arizona has very strong laws about this, that you are gonna have to pay them if you, if you come to that number. That number is not gonna be a number you can do, despite the fact the citizens love that number. That is not the number that was there when he bought the property, and that is too far off what his expectations were. You can change it, you can't gut it. So, but the citizens want it, but the citizens, in that case, can't have that, and because it's, it is, could be an illegal issue. So, we don't know these numbers yet, but the point is, the right, the wrong, I say, the wrong thing to do is to say, we're gonna make you negotiate for every inch you get. Why don't you just tell them, 40 feet is as much as you get, 50 feet is as much as you get, 60 feet is as much as you get. That's the way, codes send messages to the public sector as to what they can build. Your code has marbles in its mouth. Your code says, we're not sure what you can do with the property because we have layers upon layers of citizen expectations and we can't tell which one applies.
I'd hate to see a 90-foot building next to a 35-foot building.
I hear you loud and clear.
I'd hate to see combining these different things and simplifying them. Now, we're gonna have development along the golf course, which is not gonna be.
But that's, no, we haven't changed anything along the golf course.
You're combining a whole bunch of things.
You have a golf course zone that doesn't have a golf course in it. You have a golf course zone that has housing in it, and the rules of that housing are identical to another zone district. It's called by a different name and it allows exactly the same thing, so we're calling it exactly the same thing. You will not be able to do one thing next to that golf course that you can't do today. But, why would you have a zone district called Golf Course that is not about a golf course? It's about housing around a golf course and it's exactly the same as the housing that's allowed elsewhere in the city. Why would you do that?
Are there restrictions in that where they're not?
No, that's why we're telling you that. We're not gonna get rid of setbacks, we can move on, but the setbacks have not been set. We're not trying to eliminate them. In some downtowns, and I have not been asked to do this, in some downtowns where you want buildings to come up right to the sidewalk and right next to each other, there are places that have no, downtown Denver has no setbacks. That's the only place where zoning codes don't have setbacks, and we have not been asked to get rid of setbacks. What we are trying to do is say, don't bury them in 10 different PUD categories. Tell them, in this zone district, the setback is X unless you're next to a house and then it's Y, or unless your house is, the lot is bigger than the following, then it's Z, but just tell them the number. We haven't been asked to get rid of them, we've been asked to put them in more clearly. So, this gentleman behind you has got his hand up.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but like, we live in a residential area, single-family, multiple, in the same area. Heights have been limited by the city and the building code. No house can be higher than so forth.
Right.
And so, the guy up in the top of the hill has a good view, the guy below him is a little lower, but he can still see.
Right.
But, down here on London Bridge Road, where they had a new development, and it was supposed to be a health club and everything else and low density, well, they found out financially they can't go through it and they gave it up. Another guy comes in, he says, I'm gonna build 40 homes over here in that little parcel and it's gonna be higher, so all the people on the other side of that little space of road there that built according to that, you can't stop them, is that correct?
Uh, he would have to get rezoned. Now, the scenario you're saying is, first of all, let's be clear, every code has height limits for single-family houses, and you're right, if you're at the top of the hill, you're lucky, and if you're at the bottom, you bought a lot without a view. But, but not because your neighbor builds a taller house, it's just that the terrain is flat, you can't see over his house. And so, we have not been asked to change that. That will stay the same. I think the scenario you're talking about is, somebody has a lot, they figure out it's unbuildable, and they come into the city council and say, please rezone me into something with a higher height limit on that area. There's nothing I can do to stop that. There's nothing you can do to stop that, except show it to city council and say, you're ruining my views, this was supposed to be 35 feet, don't rezone the guy. But, you cannot bind your city council to not change the zoning. And, at some point, this is, the extreme case is this, if they come in and sit in front of the city attorney and say, look, look at my lot, I've tried to sell it, I've tried to build it, I've tried to do everything with it, it can't be used for the purpose for which it was zoned. It is an unusable lot unless you rezone me. They may be sympathetic, because if you really have zoned something so that it's a useless piece of property, you have federal constitutional rights to get, you have a right to use your property for something that works. And rather than go through a lawsuit and lose it, the city might say, you know what? We're persuaded. You can't use this lot the way it's zoned. You're supposed to come to us and ask us to rezone it to something that can be done. We have to listen to that rather than go to court. Now, you've said, I need 40 units and I need, you know, 60 feet. We think you would be okay with 20 units and 30 feet. We don't have to give him what he wants, but we can, we do need to listen to it, but that's the extreme case. That's only if you truly have a lot that through an inadvertent mistake, the zoning will not allow you to use for economically productive purposes. In all other cases, it's a political question. He's asked you to change the rules and it's up to what city council thinks. When enough neighbors show up and say, don't do that, they usually don't do that. So.
Well, there's another problem up here north by the airport, where we're proposed to build a racetrack, okay?
Okay.
It will be loud, there ain't no doubt about that, but only once in a blue moon, really. I mean, you're not, you're not gonna have races every day of the week, but then they got a new RV park that's gonna be right next to it. Now, the park that's there right now is raising holy cane.
Yep.
About what's going on in the airport. Well, the airport was there long before these guys were, so that's an old problem every city has, I understand that.
Right. But the racetrack is not.
Well, it's just like Phoenix right now, they changed the flight pattern, now the people that own on the other side of town are raising hell because all that noise is on their side of the town. But, what I'm saying is, we gotta have some kind of limitations where people really would have a lot of money invested and then say, well, what am I gonna do with my property now because I can't sell it because the racetrack's there? You know, that's up to the city council, I imagine, to straighten that out, not your...
It is, it is. Well, no, I think, we have been, we, we know about the racetrack proposal. We have been told that it needs to be, that the code needs to allow it because it's probably gonna, not allow it, but it needs to address it, and it will be a city council decision for the reasons I've just said. If they feel like rezoning that land to allow it or to give a permit for that to happen, then it's gonna happen. And, it really is political. There's no right not to have the city rezone the next property over unless they're, but if, if they create a nuisance, you can, you could probably take them to court. Nuisance is a nuisance. But, there is not a right to have the city not change the adjacent lands to do something different than what you expected when you bought your property. You just, you can't stop that, that's a matter of the...
Racetrack out there isn't an industrial area or anything.
It is an industrial area. If you're gonna have it, it would be out there, but as you pointed out, every city has these problems of adjacencies. We sure wish this hadn't happened next to that, but it did, and so, most of those are in the category where you, you have to work it through a city council. So, yeah, sorry, yeah. Yeah, sir.
Regarding the scope of your effort here, do you plan to put a prescribed prohibitive acts section in your recommendations and a, and a penalty phase for anyone who would violate one of these zoning ordinances? For, for instance, the city itself, if the city wanted to violate one of these, is it would be a provision that prohibits the city from violating its own law?
Good question. The, the general answer to your question is, Module 1, which we delivered in the fall, does have an enforcement and procedures section. Yours is pretty old in its current form in that it, older zoning ordinance said that a zoning violation was a criminal violation, you gotta take them to court, you gotta get the prosecutor's attention, go to court and fine them, and then once you fine them, it's a fine a day. Most cities are moving into a civil enforcement mode where it's more like a, it's more like a speeding ticket. You have been cited, we've looked at your property, you're in violation, you can have a hearing and we can go to court, or you can pay a fine and fix it, and you don't have to go to court. We're trying to move away from having to go and treat it like a criminal activity. It is, you have violated the city laws, we don't know if you intended to or not, but there's a simpler way than treat it as if you're a criminal. You are, you have violated a regulation of the city, here are your options. Go and argue about it in court, tell us we shouldn't have done it or that you're not in violation, pay a fine, and move on and fix your property so that it's not in violation. Now, you've asked about the city, which is a different question. Can you remind me, Stu, I can't remember, some cities subject themselves to their own laws and others don't. And, Stu, I cannot remember whether, which way we went on this one. Is a city exempt from its own zoning laws?
If it was in a previous code, I don't know how the current code reads with regards to that.
Okay. Do you know?
It's not specified.
It's not specified. Here's my recommendation, and I'll, saying it publicly. I think you should subject the city to its own zoning code. Now, half the cities in America don't. Half the cities say, if we need to build a police station there, we're gonna build a police station there, and that's just the way it goes. We need to build water treatment facility, I mean, water treatment facility, these are bad examples, but they need to go where they need to go. The water flows in certain ways, it'll cost us a million bucks more if we don't put it there, so we're saving the taxpayers money, it needs to go here, we're just gonna do it here. We're, we're your elected officials, we're running the city, that's part of our job. So, sometimes they exempt themselves. Our advice to cities is, don't exempt yourself. When you build a public building or you make a public investment, you should be subject to the same rules that your citizens are. If you think it's too strict for you, maybe it's too strict for them.
I'd like to offer an analogy, or an example. The typical laws across this whole nation, which are acceptable, you know, forever, if you have a zoning code ordinance regarding the placement of a, of a, of a government facility into this zone ordinance.
Right.
If you have a code that specifically allows a public facility to go into that, into that zoning ordinance.
Right.
And you have, another zoning ordinance does not mention the allowance of, of a public facility.
Right.
The habit that we've seen in this city is that they go ahead and say, well, there's no prohibition, therefore we can go in and do that. And, I'd like to know if you're planning to address that issue when you make recommendations.
Well, we do, but not, we don't, most of the codes we've written recently, it's a good question, don't have a paragraph called Things That You Just Can't Do, but the introduction to the table that I just walked through here says, if it's not listed as yes, if it's a blank slate, a blank, blank cell, you can't do it. That's the prohibition. There's a P, which means permitted, a C, you have to ask permission, a blank cell means there's no one you can ask permission to do this, it's just not allowed.
A prohibit, a prohibition of that type.
Yeah.
Has no force unless there is a penalty phase associated with it.
Well, if, it's not a penalty till they do it. If they do it, then the fines kick in that we've talked about earlier. But, what I'm taking your comment as, you wanna make, I think you want us to be as clear as possible about the fact that if it's not permitted, it's prohibited, and prohibited means you're going to be penalized for violating the code.
So, the subjective issues cannot, you know, decisions cannot be made later on.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right. I would agree with you, yeah.
One last question that I have is relative to the walkway we have along the channel.
Yeah.
Will that be preserved?
We are, we are, we, the current code says, yes, you should. You should preserve that walkway, that public access walkway along the channel. It is something I want to talk with your city attorney about, because usually, if the public has a right to walk along a waterfront, there is a federal doctrine or a state doctrine or a state statute that allows it, and I don't know the situation in Arizona. We are carrying it over. The answer to your question is, we are not eliminating it. We are leaving that in, and I am presuming that there is a reason it's in the current code because your city attorneys have found a legal right to do that. Now, if you can't find one, it is difficult for the city to require a private property owner to allow the, to force me, I own lakefront property, unless there's some law or court holding out there to say, Don, you must allow above the waterline, you must allow the public to walk across your property. You, why? Why? Private property rights, pretty fundamental to it, is the right to tell people they can't come on your property. And so, you, if you, many states do, and many localities do, every city wants to, federal government along the national shorelines, there's doctrines, public trust doctrines, everybody wants to find a way to do it, but you gotta find a way to do it. You can't just say, Don, tough, I know you wanted peace and quiet, but we're gonna tell you that the public walks across your land. So, we are carrying it over, I'm presuming it's legal, we'll have to work that through.
When I was talking to you the other day, it sounded like the owners' rights take precedent and they could eliminate all of the walkway along the channel. Is that not true?
No, I, well, if, if, if you get a smart lawyer behind a lawyer and he says to me, there is no right in Arizona to do that, it never was. You, you wrote it, but it was never enforceable, and I'm telling you today that if you put it in the code, I'm gonna sue you because it's not enforceable, you can't make me do it. Now, if I get that call from Lake Havasu City, I'll take it out. But, unless we get that call, I want, we're trying to preserve it. I like to walk along waterfronts too, but I've told you the legal status. If it's illegal today and somebody tells me it never should have been in the code, then we're gonna have to take it out, but no one has told me that. I have not tried to take it out, I don't want to take it out. You're looking as if I'm making this up, I'm not. If the, if, we have done the following, and I'll say this because people are interested, you do have provisions in the current code, that your provisions about who can walk along the water, easements along the water, and easements to the water from places that are not on the water, behind, presumably the street behind, trying to get the public to get to the water. Those are conflated, the language is very confusing as to which one you're talking about. We have separated it in our draft to say, look, you do have a right to walk along the water, that is preserved. Your language that says, everybody's gotta allow a through, what you say is, we have view corridors, we don't know where they are, but from behind the buildings, you ought to be able to see the lake, we don't know where they are. Well, that's pretty hard to enforce. And it says, it suggests, and I can't tell whether it means it or not, and those view corridors, you can walk across them too. Now, I got red lights going on in my head because to say, thou shalt preserve a view corridor, I can do that. That just means shaping the buildings, that's setbacks what you raised earlier. You put the, say, look, every so often, the building can't be wider than this, and then you gotta have a place where people can view the lake from where they are, and it needs to be 40 feet wide or 60 feet wide or 100 feet wide. That's just shaping buildings for the public good. That's okay, you can easily do that. The day you say, oh, and since there's nothing here, the public can walk from that street along your property line or through your property to get to the water, now you got a lawsuit because there is no reason why this building created the need for those people to walk to the waterfront. So, we have tried to distinguish and say, along the waterfront, we want to preserve public access, from behind to the waterfront, we can preserve view access, but unless your city attorney tells me to say, Don, just tell them they can walk across that land, I'm gonna say, I, wait, there are, there are US Supreme Court cases that say, you can't do that, guys. This person's building did not create the need to walk to the lake. You can attach conditions related to the impacts they're creating. You, nothing they did created the need for people behind them to walk across their property to the lake. That is not a development impact that you can put a condition on and say they can't do. But, I will take my guide from your legal counsel. But I will take my guide from your legal counsel. If they tell me to put it in there, I'm happy to put it in there. I'm just telling you, I don't think it's enforceable unless you can prove that they created the need for that walkway.
Down in Florida, they had that problem, and all the hotels on A-1A wound up, the only way they could keep their beach private is keep people -- they fenced off their property right to the waterline, and anybody that walked past that literally was trespassing, even though it was public domain.
Unless they were.
Now, we're lucky, though. The city council here has done a good job. The waterfront, all the way from the condos, also have an access. You can walk along that whole thing all the way up into Rotary Park and get the other side because it's all originally public property belonging to the city.
Yep.
And they dedicated it as a memorial walkway, and they already got the stones in. Now, the new developer has agreed with the city, when he builds that New English Village supposedly.
Right.
We will have a walkway front there, and all the stones will be replaced as they were. So I don't, you know, really, our city's on the ball on most ordinances.
And I want to be clear. Don't blame Clarion. I'm not trying to eliminate your water access. I like it, too. Everybody likes it, but we've written codes in Philadelphia, and Detroit, and along a lot of waterfront. The cities have to figure out, "Can I require this, or do I have to buy this, or do I have to arm-twist the developer to dedicate?" And they make it happen because their voters want it to happen, but you can't make it happen by just demanding that it happen. You can't just write, "Give me your property rights." You can't do it that way. You will be vulnerable, and your city council has been piecing it together to figure out, okay, which, do I pull out the wrench? Do I pull out the hammer? Do I pull out the screwdriver? What, do I pull out my wallet? What are we going to do to make this happen? And that's their job, is to figure out which, what's legal and what's not legal, and we will go as far as we think is legal to get that to happen here, so. Other questions? All right. Well, we will stay around in case any of you are shy. You don't seem like shy people to me, but we'll be happy to hang around and ask more questions. I thank you for coming, and I really hope you'll come to the third one. I think it's topics that you will find interesting: Access, landscaping, buffering of single-family homes, lighting, if you care about lighting, that'll be in the next one, parking, which every American has an opinion about parking and whether it's good or bad. Parking will be in the next one, and then we'll put it all together after that, but I thank you. Yes, sir?
[inaudible]
No, that is for the plan update. The one I'm talking about, we'll send out a notice if you sign up back there, but that will be more like May, probably, April or May. Okay? We'll make -- please sign up, and we'll get your notices here. I'm going to say this, even though I may regret it. When we walked in, there were a couple of gentlemen who really wanted to ask whether this effort was driven by Agenda 21. If you want to talk Agenda 21, I'll be happy to talk to you about in the hallway. This has nothing to do with Agenda 21, and it is a difficult topic once people start saying that. If you want to have it explained, I'll be happy to. If you want to get on the web, go ahead. The words Agenda 21 and the principles behind Agenda 21 were never raised in this process until I was heard it in this room this morning. This has nothing to do with that effort, so thank you very much. Thanks.